Call the meeting in order. This is the City of Frankfurt Board of Commissioners' January Voting Meeting. Today is January 23rd. And normally we start with an invocation. I don't believe the rabbi is here tonight. So if not, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now I'll ask our city clerk to call for the roll.
Commissioner Thompson?
President.
Commissioner Unger?
Present.
Commissioner May?
Present.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Present. And we'll get started with ceremonial and recognition. And, uh, yes. All right, we want to, Detective Gus Curtis is not here right now, but we want to congratulate Detective Curtis, who was honored as Frankfurt Police Department's Officer of the Year, and dispatcher Abigail Abby Harold, who was also honored as the E-911 Centers Dispatcher of the Year, Matt Stevens, who was honored as the EMT of the Year, and Anthony Poor, who was honored as the Paramedic of the Year. And this was on January 17th by our local BFW post. And congratulations to all and for a job well done. Any other ceremonial recognition? Yes, Commissioner May?
Thank you, Mayor. At the request of Commissioner Waldrich and on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, we want to recognize Senior Biology Major and 93rd Miss Kentucky State University, Miana Wallace, recently published a joint research article on ovarian cancer in the peer-reviewed journal entitled "LAND." And also our congratulations to Richard Taylor for being inducted into the Kentucky Writers' Hall of Fame. And Ms. Lilian Saxena Smith, excuse me, was in the Distinguished Young Women of Kentucky at the Singletary Center for the Arts and represented Frankfurt very well. We just wanted to give congratulations to those members of our community.
Yes, Commissioner Unger?
Thank you, Mayor. I would also like to welcome a new city baby. You can see on the screen, this is the newborn son of our dispatcher, Michaela Dean, who had the baby on January 11th. And just congratulations, and I hope you're able to enjoy this time.
Any other? Okay, we'll move on to citizens' comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
When I call your name, just come to the front, and we'll give you five minutes, and we'll let you know when you're getting close. Kimberly Gester is our first.
I got it. Yeah. I'm nervous, so I'll speak fast. It won't hit five minutes at all. But good evening, I'm Kimberly Gester, and I live at 518 Logan Street in South Frankfurt. I am a board member of KCDC, but I'm not here in that capacity today, but I do want to talk about an initiative that we're considering. So last, two weeks ago, Penny Peeler presented to you the $440,000 grant from Congressional Congressman Barr's office. This workforce development grant will provide 25 Franklin County residents training in IT and cybersecurity at no cost to them. Penny has worked really hard to secure commitments from both Interapt and KSU to develop this training program and provide a paid internship, a paid apprenticeship, excuse me, for those that complete the training. In addition to a full-time paid apprenticeship, those that successfully complete the 12-week training will also receive an industry-recognized certificate and 12 KSU credits. Program graduates will enter into Interapt's Registered Apprenticeship Program approved by the U.S. Department of Labor. Interapt will be their employer, while CVS Health will provide them on-the-job learning and a remote work opportunity for the apprentices. These apprenticeships will pay $50,000 for the first year. If all 25 students successfully complete the training, that's a $1.25 million wage impact in Franklin County. Wages that are not here currently. This is economic development in its purest sense, creating jobs for our residents, and it comes out with, comes without economic development incentives from Frankfurt or Franklin County, so it costs you no money. Why am I here telling you things already you know, that you already know? These funds have been set aside for KCDC, but we have to apply for them. That application is due February 28th. I was supposed to present to the board those materials and hear feedback from the other commissioners about that application, but that meeting was canceled. It's in the process of being rescheduled, but there is a lot to get done by February 28th, and so this is imperative that this meeting get scheduled. Also, I want you to know that there is absolutely no guarantee that KCDC Board will approve this application. So I'm here today to ask you that if you want to bring this federal money, $440,000, to Franklin County, provide this training to 25 residents of Franklin County at no cost to them, at no cost to us, we need to call the other KCDC Board members. You and the public. I encourage you to reach out to them. You can get their contact information from Terry Bradshaw. The contact information's not current on the website, but the website is kycapitaldevelopment.com. So I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Kimberly.
Thank you.
And next, Lucas Stone. Welcome.
Thank you. Unfortunately, my concern is not as pleasant. My name is Lucas Stone. I live at 690 Fairview Avenue. For eight years, I've been dealing with a harassing neighbor, James Mans at 114 Schinkel Lane. His atrocious behavior is evidenced by over 65 police and emergency response calls to his home. The squalid condition of his yard has reduced the property value of my home and others around it. His behavior, I deal with in criminal court. For his attack on my property value, I'm coming to you. There are city ordinances, and I've been looking them all up, regarding signs and flags that limit square footage of even temporary signs to 32 square feet. This is in Table 13-2 under signage in the city ordinances. I will argue, and I don't appreciate having to say this, but that "Fuck Biden" is not a campaign sign, but instead a public display of vulgarity. Not a pleasant greeting for people traveling Schinkel Lane, or an appropriate greeting for schoolchildren turning past it on a bus twice a day. That's been going on for two years. Even campaign signs are temporary and not intended for limitless display. These flags are not properly displayed, some are not secure, some are too close to the road, they're supposed to be 10 feet from the road. They create distracting movement for motorists. That is also in the city ordinances, 1301, Section C. They are lit with cobbled-together string of extension cords and lamps. Not a permanent electrical setup that is safe for the public. In addition, the yard is littered with unused motors, pallets, broken toys, an old canoe, an unused dog kennel, and a rotating array of discarded objects. This violates Refuge Code 5003, Section A and F daily. It is an unsightly mess and offensive greeting along a main artery of downtown. People in this town are spending millions of dollars to improve Frankfurt's image and promote tourism. I know because I'm working on the Sauer Building, I've been working on the Crittenton House, I've been working all over downtown for a lot of businesses and a lot of people. I've been working on several historic renovations, and I can assure you that the investment I've made into my own property at Fairview Avenue is as important to me. There is no reason to allow anyone to degrade property values in this way. I've invested a lot of time, money, and energy in maintaining and improving my home. I cannot recoup my investment presently, even if I move away from the mess. In addition to his unsightly display at 114 Schinkel Lane, James Mans has, at my last notice, been involved in excess of 65 police and emergency calls, which I mentioned earlier. A great percentage involve har- harassing my wife and myself, and physically engaging my wife, myself, and other neighbors and citizens. How many city resources is the criminal behavior of one person in this town allowed to consume? City ordinances are in place to address most of these issues. We've contacted the city manager in the past with very little help. I'm asking you to do what's best for our community. Enforce the regulations, improve the quality of this city, and increase city revenues by enforcing fines when necessary. We're at the end of our rope. We've been dealing with this person for eight years. I've had him in court on abuse charges, harassment charges, and I'm taking him to court again. I'm getting ready to file civil suit against this person. I need help from anybody and everybody in this city that can help put a stop to this nonsense. There's no reason for anybody to be slashing tires and causing as much chaos as this individual has in this community for this long. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll look into that. And move on to the consent calendar.
I didn't make sure to sign in.
I guess are we required to allow someone to sign in if they?
You have to sign in by a certain time before, but up to the board.
Yeah, it's up to the board.
Can you make a motion to?
Yeah, you make a motion. You want to come up and state your name?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is John Carlton. I just want to quickly say that I hope you support the staff request to submit an application to the 2023 Paul Bruin Historic Preservation Subgrant Program. Being a small town under 50,000 and a certified local government can be a great thing, especially when access to grants of between 300,000 and 750,000 are available. These funds, if received and applied strategically, will have a significant, have significant returns on investment for Frankfurt. Improvements on our collective facades and the quality of our historic structures will attract local residents, tourists, and businesses, raise property values, increase tourism, improve quality of life downtown, and all of that increased traffic will create more business downtown, which means those businesses will pay more taxes and, in turn, all of that will provide more revenue for city government and our city school system. Along with that, I want to encourage you to create a program of financial incentives for preservation all across the city, including various loan programs with the banks who would collectively share risk, tax abatements, deferments, and moratoriums, transfer development rights, and purchase of development right programs for facades and buildings, and more. These programs can be for various preservation activities, including retrofitting of windows, restoring historic porch, rebuilding historic retaining walls like on Capitol Avenue, or even for performing archaeological work. If the city and county work together with the banks, the Chamber of Commerce, tourism, Franklin County Trust, Heritage Council, and others, we can create incentives for both preservation and economic development. Also want to encourage support of the countywide housing study. This is something that has been discussed many times by many civic groups and appointees to the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee as something that is very needed for us to do our job since the beginning of the Comprehensive Plan rewrite last year. And lastly, I know you all got my email regarding the 250th anniversary of Hancock Taylor's 1773 Survey of Frankfurt, which will occur on July 16th, 2023. I hope we can come up with a way to commemorate and celebrate that of that. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, John. Now we'll go to the consent calendar, and I'll turn it over to our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number one, we have the minutes for the work session, December 12, 2022, and the regular meeting, December 19, 2022. Item number two is the Paul Bruin Historic Preservation Subgrant Program that Mr. Carlton was speaking about, and staff request permission to submit this grant application. It's funded by the National Park Service. As Mr. Carlton said, it supports rehabilitation of historic properties. Previously, the city has used their own funds to do a similar type program, and this is an opportunity to actually access federal program funds. In previous times, we required a match by businesses so that, or business building owners, so that the, the money will go farther and we can actually reach more building owners. Item number three, staff is seeking approval for Amendment Number One to the Professional Services Contract with Hazen for the design of the Willow Street Pump Station Force Main relocation. As we started this project, staff had learned it's necessary to move this pump to ensure a consistent flow, and this is also going to help with stormwater drainage. This is a KIA loan, and the investment is important in complying with our combined sewer consent decree, and the total budget now will be $787,738. Item number four, staff is requesting approval for a construction contract with Herrick Company for the wastewater treatment plant RAS pump replacement project. Last year, the sewer department replaced, used a, a single RAS pump to kind of test it out to see how it'd work. They were really pleased with its performance, so we budgeted in fiscal year '23 to replace the remaining three for a total of $114,000. Item number five, the construction contract at the wastewater treatment plant. Staff is requesting approval for a contract with Herrick Company to, for the replacement of the slide gate, slide gates at the wastewater treatment plant. Sewer department has six gates that control how flow is diverted within the plant, and all of these gate, these gates are original to the plant, and they've exceeded their useful life and need to be replaced. This is, was budgeted in our fiscal year '23 for a total contract amount of $138,000. Item number six, staff is requesting the Board of Commissioners' approval for a sewer extension contract with Haddix Construction for the mayor to sign all related documents. The property is owned by PNN Properties. Haddix Construction is the developer and wishes to construct a sewer extension for the development of that property. This is in an area that has existing sewers out there by Governor Squares, the Copperleaf subdivision. Item number seven, the Professional Services Agreement with QK4. Staff is recommending approval of a Professional Services Agreement with QK4 for assistance with departmental projects. In the past, the Frankfurt Sewer Department has used contract engineering services since 2018. Recently, Coilen Associates canceled their contract earlier this year, and staff received a, the Frankfurt Sewer Department received a proposal from QK4, and we'd like to enter in a contract with them that's worth up to $221,000, and this was budgeted in fiscal year '23. Item number eight, Operation Underground Railroad. Staff is requesting approval for the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding between Operation Underground Railroad and the Frankfurt Police Department for the deterrent prevention, investigation, and prosecuting of predators seeking to exploit or engage minors. This MOU will allow Frankfurt Police Department to provide data to our Underground Railroad, and our Underground Railroad will provide a financial donation for the reimbursement of departmental costs associated. The financial impact should be minimal, may save us some costs, and it's a really good effort at coordinating to catch these various predators, and especially people in human trafficking. Item number nine, Financial Advisor Services. Staff is seeking Board of Commissioners' approval to hire Raymond James Associates as a financial advisor. The services to be provided will be assistance on bond issues for the Transit Center parking garage, the new fire station, and certain downtown, select downtown and parks master plan projects. Finance staff solicited bids from three firms, and Raymond James was selected for a, a number of different factors. So at this time, we'd like to, your approval to hire them. Item number 10, staff is requesting approval to pay off early a KI Kentucky Infrastructure Authority loan. We were approved in 2017 for this loan to conduct various sewer and stormwater improvements in the Holly Hills and Meadowview area. We finished up the stormwater work, and our sewer department decided to pay for their work in cash rather than by the loan. The city will save substantial money by paying off this loan early. The total is $253,118. This will require a budget amendment, and it will be paid out of our rainy day funds. Item number 11, staff is seeking approval to enter in a contract of $25,000 with Make My Move for remote work, marketing, and consulting work. The Board of Commissioners previously allocated $50,000 in one-time expenses to activate the remote Frankfurt program. This $25,000 is part of that allocation. The remaining $25,000 is to fund incentives, including up to $5,000 per person, for incentives for people who have salaries at a minimum of $100,000 to relocate to Frankfurt. Benefits of this program, similar to what Ms. Gester was talking about, we talk about economic development, bringing in, having high-paying jobs. It'll activate our economic development focus of the strategic plan, also the focus area of the story of Frankfurt. There's a couple of communities in Kentucky who are experiencing success with this, including Owensboro, and a lot of great direct and indirect tax benefits. Item number 12, the mowing contract extension. Staff is seeking approval for the Board of Commissioners to extend agreement with Matt's Lawn Care to provide mowing, weed eating, and bush hogging services for the city. Staff has been very satisfied with their performance and wishes to extend the agreement another 12 months per the contract that was signed in 2022. Item number 13, staff is requesting authorization for the City of Frankfurt to enter in three agreements for community events in 2023, including the International Jazz Day Festival, which will be April 28, 2023, Bourbon on the Banks Festival, which is slated for October 6 and 7, 2023, and the Veterans Day Parade on November 11, 2023. Item number 14, staff is seeking approval for the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding between the Office of Homeland Security Investigator and the Frankfurt Police Department. This agreement allows additional Frankfurt police officers and/or detectives to serve as task force officers. This doesn't have any negative effect on staffing, nor does it cause any additional cost for the department, and it's just a great way we can have closer cooperation with the Office of Homeland Security Investigations. Item number 15 is our personnel actions. I think a lot of us here are happy to see a lot more appointments rather than retirements and resignations, so we're really pleased to accept the appointment of Jonathan Setlin from the Police Department on January 17, 2023 as Patrol Officer One. Also accepting the appointment of Ryan Phillips in the Police Department on January 17, 2023 as a Patrol Officer One. The appointment of Alicia Amsler in the Police Department on January 17, 2023 as Patrol Officer One. The appointment of Lee Winslow in the Police Department on January 17, 2023 as Patrol Officer One. The appointment of Joseph Grappner in the Police Department on January 17, 2023 as Patrol Officer One. The appointment also of Austin Horton Mary in Public Works and Streets on January 10, 2023 as a Public Work Tech in Streets. The appointment of James Powell in the Sewer Department on January 17, 2023 as Plant Operator. The appointment of Leon Harlow in the Sewer Department on January 31, 2023 as a Sewer Tech. Also the appointment of Jason Hall in Public Works and Solid Waste on January 24, 2023 as a Solid Waste Tech. We accept the resignation of Austin Nulsher in the Fire and EMS Department on December 30, 2022 as a firefighter one. And we're also accepting retirement of Quincy Thurman in Public Works and Streets on January 31, 2023 as a Senior Public Works Tech, and we authorize the payout of accrued leave.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve the consent calendar and a second by Commissioner Unger. Any discussion? Seeing none, hearing none. Clark, will you please call for the vote?
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Unger?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Yes. All right, that motion carries, and we'll move on to action items. We have a second reading.
So, First Ordinance by Title, An Ordinance Amending Section 40.21 of the City of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances relating to Police Department original appointments. Summary, this ordinance had its first reading on December 19, 2022. It amends Section 40.21b3 of the City of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances related to Police Department original appointments to: One, specified applicants and the accelerated candidate process are required to pass a physical examination, drug screen, and background investigation, and possibly psychological and polygraph examinations. Two, change the fitness requirements for these applicants to the Police Department Fit for Duty process rather than the Peace Officers professional standards. And three, provide that after one year with the Police Department and officer's years of service with other agencies may be credited towards consideration of the department's professional standards, senior or master patrol pay incentive.
Okay. Any, well.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve this second reading. And this ordinance, do we have a second?
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Thompson. Any discussion on this ordinance? Questions? Okay. I'll ask the clerk to call for a vote.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Unger?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Yes, and that ordinance carries. And we'll go on to another second reading, and I should have pointed out, we have Rob Moore here filling in temporarily for Laura Ross, so, welcome back, Rob.
Well, please forgive me if I'm a little rusty.
City Attorney, acting city attorney.
By Title, An Ordinance Amending Section 40.06 of the City of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances related to safety employee fitness for duty requirements. Summary, this ordinance amends Section 40.06 of the City of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances regarding safety employee fitness for duty requirements to reference the correct Police Department policy containing the fitness requirements for sworn members of the Police Department and delete Police Department requirements that conflict with the policy.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion to approve the ordinance and a second by Commissioner Thompson. Is there any discussion or questions on this ordinance? Seeing none or hearing none? Clark, will you call for the vote?
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Unger?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Yes. And motion carries. Moving to action item number three, a first reading, looking for a sponsor. Happy to sponsor the first reading, sir. Commissioner May?
By Title, An Ordinance to amend the City of Frankfurt's Code of Ordinances, Chapter 152, by amending the City of Frankfurt's Zoning Regulations, Article 7, Planting Manual. Summary, this ordinance amends the City's zoning ordinance, Article 7, Planting Manual, to update the list of acceptable and unacceptable plant species allowed to be used in development landscape plans.
Any discussion on this before we move it on to the second reading next month? Number four, another first reading. Commissioner Unger.
By Title, An Ordinance Amending Section 40.23 of the City of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances related to Police Department promotions. Summary, this ordinance amends Section 40.23 of the City of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances related to Police Department promotions to: One, reference the Police Department's police and procedure, excuse me, policy and procedure 202.01, which establishes standards for an administration of the promotional testing, appointment of the applicants, and review of the appointment for a probationary period. Require that changes to the policy shall be reviewed by the city manager, city attorney, and/or human resources director as necessary. And three, delete the remaining provisions governing promotional requirements as these are now established by policy.
Next, Commissioner Thompson.
Mayor, can we have the police chief come up and talk about this particular ordinance?
Our Chief of Police, please approach.
Thank you, Chief, for being here. Can you, can you break down specifically what Section 1 and Section 2 are? I understand the deletion portion, but can you, can you talk to us about what we're streamlining here and the purpose of it?
Basically, the purpose is to allow us to have this to be more directed towards the policy-driven side of it, and basically, if you look at the policy and ordinance as it is, it basically reads word for it. So basically what we're allowing to do in case there are need of changes, such as what we're doing here. We've opened up to patrols' input and other individuals in the department, and deemed there needed to be some, some changes to our promotion, whereas now, with these new changes, we'd add in more, reduce, I guess, the value of the written test, and add more to policy knowledge, more knowledge of KRS and stuff, to really have a more rounded supervisor when they first get the position. So that's ultimately the biggest change, and it just, ordinance will just push, instead of reading exactly as it is, it'll just push that recommendation to the policy, which will read exactly as it is now with the exception of those additions.
Can, can I ask, is this a, is this industry standard? Is this, is this what a lot of communities are going to with regard to the lessening of the, the written examination and more of the policy knowledge? Or is this something that we are attempting to do to keep our numbers, or what's the, what's the impetus behind?
The big thing is, I've sat on boards myself, myself, for these type of changes. The big thing is, I've sat on boards myself, myself, for these type of changes. We're one of the few that I've seen that doesn't have some type of directive towards knowledge of your policies and your, and your procedures as well as KRS. So we're just adding that in there into the points that it'll reduce for the written.
All right. Thank you, that's all the questions I have.
Sounds like we're trying, we're getting up to speed with others that are already doing that.
It is, and, and ultimately, we added in there also, as seen in what I've said, we're given some also recognition and additional, I guess, points, if you will, towards promoting for education as well, as well as, you know, showing leadership by being part of the field training process and training of officers. So we're giving some other incentives in there to also have, once again, a stronger leader in that position when they first take it. Mayor?
When I...
Sorry, sorry, Mayor, I don't think I have the authority to do that, I apologize.
Thanks, Mayor. When I had a couple of questions earlier and I was talking to the City Manager, she pretty much answered those, but I would like to say happy one-year anniversary to you as Chief.
Thank you, Mayor.
And I think it's great to see, you know, three items on the agenda, and you're making some changes on policy and that sort of thing, so thank you.
Yes, Mayor, thank you very much, and I appreciate y'all for giving me the chance to celebrate one year.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
All right, thank you all.
Action item number five. Sustainable Strategies DC Contract Renewal.
I'll, do we, do we need a sponsor for this?
No.
No, just the, staff is requesting authorization to renew the annual contract with Sustainable Strategies DC for 2023 to aid in identifying funding opportunities, building Frankfurt's competitive advantage, grant-riding assistance, and also advocacy. The city has been under contract with Sustainable Strategies since 2019, has been the recipient of more than, I was gonna say 13, 4 million, but we realized we left something out, so more than $14 million worth of grants just during this time period. And staff would like to continue this relationship for the next year and renew the contract on the same terms at $6,000 per month for a 12-month period for a total cost of $72,000.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve this contract.
Second.
And a second, Commissioner May. And I should point out that they helped write that $440,000 workforce development grant that Kimberly Guesther talked about earlier. Any discussion? Questions? Seeing none and hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call for a vote.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Unger?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Yes. Motion carries, and action item number six.
Staff is requesting the Board of Commissioners to declare an emergency for a construction purchase order with Fashion Construction for completing the emergency repairs on Broadway Street. I'm sure everybody remembers when we had a collapsed, it was an old electrical conduit that collapsed and had a nice big hole on Broadway and Lewis Street, so we, of course, need to pay for that work, a total of $53,892. And once the weather gets a little bit warmer, we'll get the pedestrian crossing restriked.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion on this? Looks like we have it budgeted. That's good. Any other? I'll ask the clerk to call for a vote.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Unger?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Yes. Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Next up, staff is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve the initial investment of $60,000 for epoxy coated reinforcing steel that will extend the parking garage's estimated service life to 35.7 years before needing major repairs. Chuck Knowles presented on this previously and is here to ask, here, if there's any additional questions.
Motion to approve.
Okay, a motion, Commissioner May?
Second.
And a second. Okay, the motion to approve the, the extra $60,000 for the epoxy coating. Any discussion or questions for Chuck Knowles in particular? Ask the clerk to call for a vote.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Unger?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Yes, and that motion carries.
Item number, action item number eight, staff is seeking approval to enter into an agreement with Points Consulting to conduct a countywide housing study. This housing study is time-sensitive and critical to our work and the comprehensive plan that we are conducting right now and soon for the rewriting of our zoning codes. Total cost is $33,500. Our planning director has discussed this with fiscal court and will be asking for their contribution at the next fiscal court meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Mr. Cockley, has this been discussed with Robert or anybody over at the county so far?
I can also answer that question, that Eric put together a great group of city and county staff. They all reviewed the RFPs, it was done with criteria, and Robert Hewitt and Tippett, Mr. Tippett participated, and Tamara Frye time being.
Good. So it's not a surprise to them that we're gonna come and ask for...
No, and we, when we set up the committee, you know, had them appointed to the committee by Judge Wells at the time, and I reached out to all of the fiscal court members at that time to make sure, get a good feel for what we were doing and hope that they could be on board. Since then, obviously, we've had a few faces change over there, haven't yet had the opportunity to speak to all of the new ones, but yeah, so for most of them, this shouldn't be a surprise.
And then you spoke to the Strategic...
Planning Committee?
Committee on last Thursday, and there were several magistrates who are members of that.
So it's well received so far.
So far.
Commissioner Unger?
I just wanted to say, I think it's great that we have in there that we don't just want to know, like, numbers of housing needed, but the kinds of housing we need and addressing, like, affordability issues there, so, great.
Oh, that was in the RFP, right?
Yep.
Great.
Should be good.
Any other discussion or questions? None? Clark, will you call for the vote, please?
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Unger?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Yes, and that carries. Moving us to action item number 10. Number nine.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Staff is seeking approval for a new contract with the Humane Society. The total cost is $71,500, and this contract will be valid until July 2023.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, Commissioner May, second, Commissioner Unger. Any discussion or questions? Looks like we have the Humane Society folks, yes.
Madam City Manager, may I ask a question?
Sure.
The $150 per animal holding with regard to potential rabies quarantine, I know it says it happens rarely, is there, is there a reason that the city, is, is the county as well have the same provision in their contract with the Humane Society?
I will speak if I know from John Hibbert, not at this time. I think it's, they are looking to work with the county on updating their contract as well with them.
Okay. I, I just, I have a concern only because it's the county attorney who would request such quarantine, I would think, based upon a crime, and that would, in itself, lend itself to the county being the one who should at least, if, if they're in the county, I understand, if they're in the city, I understand, I just, I think if we find a bunch of dogs involved in that, that, you know, perhaps the city shouldn't be stuck with that if the county attorney, who I'm sure Mr. Comley would not do this, but would send us a nice bill for that. So I just want to make sure that we're all carrying our own...
Yeah, it's my understanding they're working with the, the fiscal court now and updating their contract terms.
Thank you.
Can I just...
You want to step up here?
Yep.
Come on up. Welcome.
I'm Carrie Lowery, I'm the Shelter Manager for Franklin County Humane Society. It's actually a state law, Commissioner Thompson, that for dog bites, that those dogs be quarantined for a matter of days. That has to do with public health, that is, doesn't come under the purview of the county attorney, and the fee is specific to dogs that are seized by animal control inside the city limits.
Perfect.
So just to clarify that.
Thank you, that does, thank you very much, Ms. Lowery.
Take any other, yes, Commissioner Onger?
Yeah, I have one question. So if, there are probably a lot of, like, after-hour drops, and so, and I know that we've been probably doing that for years and years, but I just want to make sure that that's seamless and so that the contact, you know, just that that, that's all good.
Yes, actually, I'll be meeting Chief Bowman and I will be talking this week. It should be protocol. We had an incident recently when there was not notification, so we did alert and remind our patrol officers and our dispatchers that that is protocol when that, when it goes after hours. So I'll be following up again with Chief Bowman this week.
Okay, thank you.
Are we ready for a vote? Okay. Clark?
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Unger?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Yes. Now we'll go to action item number 10.
Staff is requesting approval from the Board of Commissioners to authorize the Division of Solid Waste to surplus eight vehicles from multiple departments. All vehicles have either damaged due to accidents or the needed mechanical repairs are not feasible due to the age and condition of the vehicle. Once approved for surplus, these vehicles will be sold at online auctions with the proceeds returning to the general fund. And just as a side note, we, we do, we are very aware, I've been approached by, you know, communities in Eastern Kentucky, other organizations sometimes who look for older vehicles to use, nonprofits. At this time, these are not available, these are not in good enough shape even to donate, but we keep it in mind that if we do have a vehicle that is still operable, that there are other community organizations or communities that may need it, and we'd be happy to share it with them.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve and a second. Any discussion on this surplus vehicle request? No? Clark, will you call for a vote?
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Unger?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Yes. Motion carries.
Action item number 11, staff is requesting the Board of Commissioners to authorize us to be able to apply for the 2023 Assistance to Firefighters Grant in the amount of $130,000. This will go towards buying 20 air packs for $120,000 and 10 cylinders in the amount of $10,000. If we are awarded the grant, there will be a match of 10% or just $13,000. These are actually, we know from our Sustainable Strategies and others, this is the highest priority, not only for our fire department, but it's a priority of the, the Assistance to Firefighters Grant in their application. So we, I hope we're pretty confident because these are much-needed, expensive and much-needed equipment that our firefighters use nearly every day.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion, Commissioner Unger, second, Commissioner May. Any discussion on this grant request? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call for a vote.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Unger?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Yes. And that motion carries. And number 12.
Staff is seeking approval to enter into the inter-local cooperation agreement between the City of Frankfurt and Farmdale Sanitation District and Franklin County Fiscal Court. This is otherwise known as KISOP. This has been an effort since 2018 and allows the city to provide much-needed improved sanitation to Farmdale. I would offer that the key point is that the city will not assume any liability if something should happen to the Farmdale Sanitation District. All responsibility liability leaves, lies with the county.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any questions for, for, any who's here?
Yes.
I have a question or two. So I was wondering, a couple of questions. So there's a section, peak flow rate, and I was wondering when that might become an issue? Is it only if there would be additions to the Farmdale District?
Yes.
Okay.
So what we, part of the construction of the new pump station that we'll be installing is by providing this peak flow rate, the county agreed, or Farmdale agreed, to pay so much of the construction of our pump station. So they have a 25% cost analysis that goes along with this agreement. It came up, our initial estimate was right at $10 million, so it's just under 2.5 million that there was their responsibility. The county is, went ahead and through the CARES Act and the Clean Water Program, we've received 1.9 of that, and so the rest of that will be done over the next five years. They'll have five years to finish out that payment. So it, it covers their costs that's associated with that. We have, as the Sewer Department and city, we're looking at expanding a little bit, so that won't go, that cost will not go to them, we'll keep it at the standard cost that we already come up with.
And, and the rate that they're gonna pay, which is...
Correct.
The same as...
Right. It's a wholesale rate because our goal is to keep Farmdale operating, the, because they're such a smaller entity than what the city is, they have a much better opportunity to get grant money, so we want them to continue to operate to be able to receive that grant money for the improvements that they much need out there.
Any other questions or discussion on the KISOP agreement? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call for a vote.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Unger?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Yes. Motion carries. And now we'll ask if there's any other business before we go into executive session. Yes, Commissioner Thompson?
Just very briefly, I, I had talked to Madam City Manager earlier, and, and we had talked about a couple of these things, and I had asked if, if we could, at, at some point in the next couple sessions, talk about some of these things, and I wanted to go ahead and put on record, and I, she was very, she was very kind to at least hear me out why I thought it was important that we have these updates. The first one is an update on the Home Street project. I think we've all seen enough social media posts lately about, you know, the, we know Home Street needs work, and I would just like to know the update on that. An update on the YMCA Exum Center Coordination and, and what is happening there. I know there may be some discussion about a, perhaps a smaller YMCA facility in down, in the downtown area, just wondering if there was still any talks there, and what the cities, what we believe the city's allocation may end up being with that. And then the last thing, Madam City Manager was kind enough to talk to me about, and she, she also said she was going, she'd already talked to the fire chief about this, is the, the increase of AEDs on our public athletic facilities and schools. And I, I didn't mention to her, but we, I talked last time about a CPR first aid program for parents and students at the city and county schools through our fire department. I think it would be a great opportunity to, to do that right now, especially while this is fresh in everyone's mind that this is an important issue. I would just ask that we continue to keep those things on the front burner and get some updates on this.
Commissioner Unger?
I had a couple of items. There was recently an accident on Capitol Avenue, and that have, you know, talked to staff about this. There was a hit and run right at the daycare there, so I'd like an update on where we are on Capitol Avenue with the state, as well as, you know, are there any immediate things we could do about traffic calming measures? And that was a hit and run while mom was putting their child in the car. So anything we can do to keep that moving, as well as, I did talk to the city manager about if we've heard from the Human Rights Commission about their budget, so I think she had, so it might be something we could discuss soon.
All right, any others? Okay, if not, we'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Mayor, I would knew that we go into executive session pursuant to KRS 61.810 subsection 1, subsection B regarding deliberation on the future acquisition of real property related to economic development. When publicity would be likely to affect the value of a specific piece of property, an action may be taken in open session afterwards.
Second.
Okay, motion to go into executive session and a second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
No opposed? All right, we're now going to executive session. Thank you all. Action will be taken by the board?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
A motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Where adjourn?
Good one, guys. Seven on us.